As a person, he deserves a warning. And this is his final, last warning. It's not just the three months. Because we can act on it after that as well. And I really believe that the apology letter worked to solve the issue. But, so I asked the membership to try to see it with new eyes. Okay, we're giving the person a second chance. But don't make it that much harder on that person. He really gave a sincere apology. And hopefully that resolved the problem.
Where is the apology letter?
I saw it on the file. Okay, so let's...
I never saw the apology letter.
Yes.
There's no apology letter.
Well, I have...
Excuse me. More important when I get out of this is you broke the rule. You didn't give up the board, didn't give a warning letter. Without a warning letter...
And that's my point. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. So this is the warning letter. I think, hopefully, the problem is solved. And I really feel that that won't happen again. And let's start fresh and let's move on. Thank you.
Point of order if you need to vote.
I think we have one more member that wants to speak.
Now we're putting it to the membership. What's the point?
People are getting up and they're speaking without being recognized. While I'm standing back there with my hand up, waiting to be recognized. Let's do things properly here. And I want to say that this unit being discussed, I3K, he has been a good neighbor for 16 years. Now, can I say honestly that I've never broken the rules here? No, I can't say that. Can I say honestly that I've never lost my temper, including with employees? No, I can't say that. Let's think about what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Can we call a question?
Please.
Can we call a question, please? Let's just call a question. Let's...
Yeah, I thought the board was... Was the board finished with their discussion?
Yeah, the membership's still waiting for an answer.
We're talking here about one person showing an ID coming in to the clubhouse. But yeah, we talked earlier about people walking through the gate to come in here without showing an ID. Let's get the rules straight here. If we're going to force one, let's force all of them. I can't resist this opportunity. Okay? Because I'm looking at the people that are complaining about this guy. And most of those people go in the swimming pool. And none of them, none of them follow the rule that's posted in front of their nose. Take a shower. And they go right in. They go in fully clothed. They go in fully clothed. So give me a break, guys. Give me a break.
Okay, let's try not to start picking on each other here because it is 9:00 AM. So let's call the round.
Okay, voting. Marcio?
Um, yes, to approve.
Yes. Francis?
No.
Wendy, yes? John?
Yes.
Mark?
I abstain.
Oh, Mark. Okay, abstain. Colette?
No.
Well, unbelievable.
Dog?
Yes.
Pases, four? Yes?
Yes.
Two, no?
And one is stay. Pass two.
Okay. The next item of the list is workers' compensation payment from 2010. We're getting a bill from 2010.
Workers' compensation insurance is what is called an audible policy. You give them a payroll at the beginning of the term. And then, at the end of the term, on the renewal of the policy, then the company can come in and then they audit the books and audit the payroll. And then can make any adjustments and charge you back for any of those adjustments in payroll. In 2010, the work comp company tried to come in here multiple times. We have letters. And they were not given the opportunity to audit the books. So then it was billed at just a... I don't know what the word is. They gave an additional premium just kind of overall based on the information they could obtain. Uh, we were able to get the bill down $3,000. We do all this money. These are the terms of the contract. Uh, and it is also stated that we would allow them to come in and audit the books. So it's just, you know, quick slam dunk. We have to pay the premium.
How much?
Any further discussion on the board?
The premium is $5,533.66. It started out at $8,524.66.
And to give background also for those of the board members who weren't aware, we didn't agree to pay it. And we forced an audit. And when we forced the audit, that's what brought down the amount. We didn't just pay what they told us to pay.
Yeah, eventually.
Whose fault was it? Was it the 2010 board? The 2011 board? Was it the accountant? Was it the lawyer? What?
Just kidding.
I don't know. I mean...
It's a 2010, boys. They tried, they stopped trying to contact the village in 2011. And finally, they had a lawyer contact us.
So it was a 2010 deficiency?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion to pay the work comp balance due for the period of time from 2004-13, 2010, 2013-2011 in the amount $5,533.66.
I second the motion.
Okay, now discussion on the board. No discussion?
Any discussion?
Discussion out in the audience.
What was the reason why they didn't let them do it the first time they came in here? What was the reason?
Well, we have no idea. It was in 2010. I can't speak for what happened. But the audit wasn't done, so...
First guys, we can call it. We'll call it. Doesn't matter however you want to do it.
Wasn't that Marie?
Sure, she'll be back in a moment.
That was Marie. That was her.
There he is. He's back.
He's back.
Remember Marie?
Roll call, please.
Real good.
Marcio?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dog?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Colette?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Wendy, yes? Unanimous?
Okay, the next item is the approval of payment plan for unit I1Y, India1Yinkee. Do I hear a motion?
Does everybody receive this? And I'll give you the quick reason why it comes before the board. This is the payment plan by your procedures that were adopted in 2013 on your collection procedures. The management has the right to authorize any payment plans up to 18 months, officers up to 24 months. Anything over that goes to the board. This is a 32-month payback. So because it's over 24 months, it's brought before the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
And a second? The... Thank you. Rule, do we discuss?
Any discussion on the board? Discussion from the audience? I'm sorry, did you want to say something, Phil?
Just that... This goes back to 2010.
Correct.
The delinquency. So has there been a positive change in their ability to pay?
We got close to foreclosing. They started. And we do, when we sign a payment plan, we do place a lien. So if they do not adhere to it, we can go to a writ of possession right away.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
Jason, is it after 30 days or 90 days? Like if they don't make payment the first month, we think actually we could foreclose on them?
It's very broad. It says if they do not follow through with the payment plan, we can... So it could be 31 days or whatever. Yeah.
All right, roll call, please.
How much money is involved?
$10,526.
Seventy... In three years. Three years, that's the accumulation.
The exposure is a kill. In addition to keeping up with his regular assessments, he'll pay an additional $3,2896 a month until the delinquency is paid.
Marcio?
Yes.
Dog?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Colette?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Wendy, yes? Unanimous?
The next item is tax sale of H3Q, Hotel 3 Cabana.
Reason why this is brought to the board is because this is going to be a tax auction. And there has been a lot of question in the community as to why the board doesn't try and purchase units when it goes to tax auction. Well, the simple reason is you'll never buy it for what you want it for because the prices are already driving, go high. And you're not, the association doesn't normally spend that kind of money to buy a unit. Nonetheless, it's on the agenda. The back taxes would start at the bidding of $5,612. We are owed about $10,000. So if you were going to want to purchase this unit, you should, you know, you don't go over $10,000, which it's going to go for more than $10,000. But we do need to bring it up and get clear direction that the board is not interested.
Uh, the $10,000 that it's owed to us from this unit, is there any hopes in recouping that in any scenario? If we buy it, if somebody else buys it, if they pay the taxes?
We, no, it's gone. Can we recoup it? No. No, the bank can't either. When it goes to tax sale, everyone who's owed money loses their money. Is that your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if we buy it...
But if we buy, yeah, we could recover through rent, through resale or something.
Of course. I mean, if you buy it, then you own it outright.
Or you don't get the $10,000 owed.
No, no.
Even if we buy it, we don't have to pay ourselves the $10,000?
No. It goes away. You sell it, you make a profit. And that's where you make your money. Yeah, if you buy it, you...
Is there a mortgage on the property? Do you know?
It's canceled.
It's canceled when the tax sale happens, so it doesn't matter. I don't know the answer.
It's not like any different. If it's tax...
It goes to the tax. The bank loses too. It's unencumbered if you buy it on the steps of the courthouse.
So Jason, can I ask you, what do you think is a reasonable... I mean, what is the market value for this unit? And what do you think is a reasonable bid price that we should offer as a maximum price?
Okay. Very loaded question, but I'm going to give you an answer. The only thing you can go by is what has been sold here on a similar unit in the village. What do I think it will probably sell at? Well, we just saw a cabana sell very highly. We saw other one-bedroom units being sold at auction at $40,000 or $50,000. Uh, how much, or $30,000, let's say. How much, is it worth right now?
Jason?
Yeah. Sure, okay. Okay, because we're going based on what's been sold here. Uh, so how much if you were to, if you were to want to bid on it?
Okay. Do you have that kind of capital? I think I know the answer to this. I mean, are we not in the business of...
No, if you were, my professional opinion, if you were willing, if you were able to risk $10,000, you know you're going to get it back. But it's a waste of time because you're not going to get it.
Could we theoretically exercise a right of first refusal if, let's say, the...
Not on a tax sale? Another tax sale? This is why when people go for foreclosure, the banks actually pay the taxes for the three, four years. They don't want to lose the mortgage.
And it's not, is it a water view? Is it, um, is it, what is the shape of the unit?
It's a street view on the third floor of the Hydel.
I have another question. Is this going to be like an online sale? Is there any cost to us putting in a bid? Is it going to take man time?
Somebody's got to go down there with association funds. You can't cheer his shit.
At the courthouse.
Okay, do I hear a roll call?
Next month, they're going online. And that's actually when it's taking place. Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
For what?
To... Yeah, to not do anything because we can't anyway.
Well, you don't have to vote on an agenda item. You're just discussing it. No one wants to make a motion. You move on to the next agenda.
Oh, okay. I guess the management included this to alert. So we, because I think in the past, people have complained why we haven't done anything for properties being so cheap. So I guess it's just our duty to share that it will be a tax sale. And we're just advising the membership.
Now, you can make a motion that every time there's a tax sale, you don't bring it to the board.
No, it's, it's helping to... Thank you, thank you. Uh, the next item is landscape contracts. Do I...
Okay, so you have in your package a spreadsheet which shows five different landscape companies. So that everybody on the board and the community understands what happened here back in 2012. Lawn Logic was here. They were charging $4,500 a month. There were complaints, whether it be screen breaking or what have you. This is back in 2012. And we were charged with the task of looking for a landscape company. When we found the landscape company, this landscape company that we found gave us a bid of $3,180. And we, they were hired. For the first year or so, they were doing the job. And then they gave us a notice now that they are losing a lot of money, which is understandable. That is low, $3,180 for this property, just between the people and our community. And they are, they sent a notice to increase it from $3,180 to $6,000. So we said, "Thank you very much. Please have the courtesy of giving us till April 1st so that we can find another company." We have, those are the bids that you see before you. There are one, two, three, four, five bids.
Six.
Well, the first one isn't a bid. The first one, Landscape Services for the $6,000, is actually your current that we're not going with. So that's not an actual bid. That's just listing the comparison. So you can see apple-to-apple comparison with the different vendors here.
Okay. My background in landscaping is zip. All right, so if it is electrical, mechanical, hydraulic, I'm your guide. So please give me your opinion. I can read the numbers, but quality wise, I mean that. Because right now, I'm not happy with the way it is.
Right, okay. And neither are we. So the main thing, which is very important on your property, is leaf removal. Leaf removal is huge. You've got a lot of trees and they fall, your leaves are fall here more times a year than in most communities. So you have a lot here. Most companies don't realize it. So they don't know what it is. We walk around, we show them. We're very careful. We tell them. We want to make sure that they not only get rid of them, they take them off property. They are getting down and dirty into the ground to get it. They may have to, we may have to do something with an initial cleanup, forgetting about the contract right now. Because all they're going to do is come, which is sufficient if it's starting from scratch and blow the leaves. But when it's kicked on, you may have to pay, and I don't know what it is, a small fee to have them do an initial scrub out and clean out and rake out from under the beds so that when they do their normal leaf cleaning, it just blows off and there's no issues. So now, if you're asking, there's two ways to look at this here. And it's an unfortunate situation, but there's two ways to look at it. Quality and budget. We have to look at our budget. That's what this whole process is about. Okay? You have prices here and companies here ranging from $5,950 down to $4,250. All bidding apples-to-apples. Okay? We know that we have used two of them, Valley Press and Green Experts. One is $5,050, one is $5,997. We called in, when we saw that, it was approximately what the old landscape company was telling us. We called back Lawn Logic. And they agreed to do it at their original price with no increase, which was $4,500 when they left here in 2012. Okay? If you're asking about the quality of Lawn Logic, I can, I was here a short time when they were working here. And I was asked to go get bids. So I can tell you that there were some issues, which can it be resolved? I'm sure it can be resolved if we discuss it. I know that they were, there were screens that were damaged. And we talked to them about that when we had them out here this time. And they assured that they would change that process. If they damage it, they will make sure to pay for everything and will put it in the contract. Uh, and then, so we met with those four. And then Marcio brought in a company called Little Details. Have not met with them. Maybe Marcio can talk more about the conversations he had with Little Details. And they came in below Lawn Logic at $4,250. If you're asking for my recommendation, I can only recommend really the quality from a company that we've used before. And those would be either Valley Press or Green Experts. Does not mean that Lawn Logic or Little Details can't do the job for cheaper. So you have to make a decision based on your budget and any chance that you would like to take. And we do have an out in the contract. So in any of the contracts.
Oh, yeah, Jason, I'd like to explain the out because I think if there is an out, then I'd be more comfortable finding the lowest bidder. Especially, I mean, I did a quick calculation. It'll save us $3,000 here. That doesn't sound like a lot. But I do remember in the past...
Well, why are we going over your budget?
Over Lawn Logic. It would save us $3,000. But we're still over budget. Did you do the math as to how much over budget we would be at the end of the year if we go with the lowest bidder versus the $3,100 or whatever it was?
Well, it's very easy. The difference that you just said, you're saving...
No, no, I'm saying between the two lowest bidders, between the $3,000.
Yeah, it's about $8,000.
So $8,000, there's an $8,000 difference between what we're paying now and what we would be paying with the lowest bidder, the $4,250? I mean, sorry, the $4,250.
Right now, your budget is $38,000 approximately. And the lowest bidder is what, $51,000?
Then...
It's about $13,000.
It's about $8,000. And what is the out? If they don't meet... First of all, you mentioned the leaf removal. Is that in the contract?
Yes. Every time they come.
Okay. So what is the out? What is the mechanism whereby we would say, "Okay, you're not doing the job"? And then if that happens, what's the next step?
Well, we have a 30-day out for any reason. So it's not, this is not a cure of default in this particular one.
No, they vary between 30 and 90. They push them on anything until we got two.
Well, let's pull out this one. We'll pull out the cheapest bid. If that's the $4,250 you're asking about? Okay, are you sure? Okay. The one thing that I will tell you on this particular one, we didn't, I apologize. Oh, yeah, this contract, here. May be canceled by either party upon a 30-day written notice. Says right here. It may be canceled by either party upon a 30-day written notice.
Jason, what's the budgeted amount for the year for this?
You're going to be $13,000 over budget with the cheapest bid. You'll be $13,000 over your budget with the cheapest bid.
Okay.
Only in your unit.
Wait, that's correct. It's only from April until the end of the year. So maybe $8,000 difference. Because you're starting from April.
I do have another question because I recall last year there was a small difference between two bidders on a camera project. And we came back to the second highest bidder and asked them if they could match the lowest bid. Is that something that we can do here?
You can do whatever you want before you...
And we asked, maybe give Lawn Logic another chance because I've heard both. I mean, I've heard that they were very thorough. I've also heard the comments that you made. So I'm not really sure. Maybe if we do give them, you know, stricter terms as you mentioned, to address the issues that they were having problems with, then I think I like the idea of maybe giving them a second chance since they know the property, et cetera. Can we, at this point, or is it too close, April 1st, to make a motion to have them match it? And what do you think of the possibility of them agreeing?
Well, as I said, I spoke with all of them with the exception of Little Details, but I think Marcio did speak with them. They will start April 1st. I told them our meeting is March 25th. Can you start April 1st? And they said yes.
I know, what I'm asking is, with Lawn Logic, do you think that they would match that? And do we have enough time?
I can't, I can't answer what they're going to say. They know how much they feel it costs because they've been here. They feel like they're giving us a deal, keeping it the same price from back then. So I can't answer that. Do I think they would? Maybe, I mean, it's $250. Would you throw away a contract over $250?
John, real quick, if you look at Lawn Logic, I think they're the ones that said they'll give us the first month free, which is $4,500.
Yes. Yes.
In that case, we would save it right there.
Yes.
So in that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lawn Logic contract at the price that they're offering.
Okay, is there a second?
Our second?
Wait, maybe it wasn't done. Yeah, first month free. Lawn Logic, if you sign with us, we will take $4,500 off the contract, first month free, or $4,500 off tree trim. That's in the email to come.
On Lawn Logic, I'll read you the out clause if you'd like.
Way to go, Colette.
I thought that was pretty good when I read it.
Tree trimming is extra, always extra. Extra. Oh, yeah, you got it. Tree trim hedges certain number of times each year.
$38,160.
John, I see that they don't do the...
Christie. Okay, skipping through it, I don't... Oh, here. This proposal, may be terminated with or without cause by either property with 30-day written notice.